Right for the pledge.
Why the nation's
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can just stay standing for a moment. Remember all our armed service men and women, especially our emergency service workers and all those affected by the government shutdown right now. Thank you. I want to welcome everybody to the workshop of the village of Highland Falls, Monday, October 20th. Thank you all for coming, appreciate it. This time, we're going to open up a public hearing in regards to water surcharge. I need a motion and a second.
Second.
I need a motion first.
You get a motion.
You made a motion? I'm sorry. I'm getting older, can't hear. Motion by trustee Olivia, seconded by trustee Garjulo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Come on up, Ms. Scott. We're going to put that microphone over on the end there and you just address the board, that'd be great. It is on.
I am Scott, Fort Montgomery. So the surcharge is for all water users? Will the people in Fort Montgomery have to pay that surcharge as well?
Yes.
Because maybe we need to revisit why we pay 150% for water. So that would be my comment.
Sure, come on up, Ms. Livsey.
Yep. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Board. Jim, I appreciate we had a quick chat this morning. I'm Mervyn Livsey. I have a single-family home up on Mountain Avenue, and I understand that we're going to be charged. For, I'm not sure what this is for, maintenance or equipment or what it's going to be for, but all I know is I've been up at my place for 25 years. The past four years, I've had groundwater. So it's sort of a juggling act. Do I say, no, I don't want to pay anything to correct a problem that is an issue in the village of Highland Falls and has been an issue in the village of Highland Falls? We all know that infrastructure in the village of Highland Falls is weak. So I want to have clean water in my home. That's what I want to have. One of the problems that I have, though, is being on a single-family home, I'm going to pay, and I'm just, I believe it's $75 a year, is that correct?
It's in the, it's been posted in the paper that it's $50 per bill, but we're going to have some projections.
Okay, so $50 a bill, so that's what I'm going to pay. With two of us there, I'm going to pay $50. What I don't think is really too fair is if there's an apartment complex next to me, and let's say there's four apartments inside that building, let's say they're getting $2,000 each, that's $8,000 of income coming into that building. I'm not getting any income inside my home. So where is it really fair that I'm paying the same price as then? I think before this decision made on the board tonight, there's some work to do with the mathematics of how to put this out there, because my water usage would not be even in comparison to a building that size. So that's what I'm saying. I'm saying right now to the board, I think you should really table this tonight and think about the mathematics of where that's going to be fair out there to a home versus an apartment duplex to a business. I shouldn't really have to pay that same amount. Maybe we could toss it around where it's all equaled out, but for a single-home person, he's not paying the same. That's it.
Hello, Tiana Grayhanna, new resident to Highland Falls at three villa. I just wanted to say, kind of agree with that. It maybe should be resident-based or based on, you know, where, how many people are living there. I think that's fair and equitable. Another thing I wanted to note is I know in economic times and, you know, just in general, even though $50 per bill or 100 or 75 a year doesn't seem like a huge impact to a lot of people, there's definitely a good amount of people who are struggling every day, so maybe just considering, based on income, taxable income for the household, maybe an exclusion for our lower-income population in town, just as to take a little less worry off our shoulder. That's it.
Rick Jersey, I live up on Chestnut Street in Highland Falls. I'd like to know what the surcharge is going to be used for. Is it for infrastructure? Is it for meters? There's a lot of rumors going around. If it's for infrastructure, with the bills we've been paying, this should be on top of it. I got home tonight, my wife's worried about the laundry now because we got brown water again. In 30 years, I've gone through two washing machines, the hot water and the cold water, because all she uses is cold water. Clogs the machines up, faucets, forget about it. I have brown water, I have pictures, I can show you, Snapple is lighter than the water that comes out of my faucet when they flush. And we get this constantly now. I don't have a lot of pressure, I'm as high as a tank, so I can accept that. But I have brown water more than most people ever do, and to have to pay an extra $100 a year for more brown water, I just don't think it's right. It filters something, it's, I just don't think it's right to charge the extra money if you're not supplying a quality product. If my water was clean all the time, sure, do what you have to do. You know, but I don't have, I was going to bring some down today, but I figured that would just be useless. I just wanted to thank you for your hearing.
No, appreciate it.
What's your neighborhood, Mr. Jersey?
Chestnut Street.
Chestnut Street. I'm the third highest house in Highland Falls.
Right.
Ron Malakot, I'm sure you all know me, I speak almost every meeting. I read in the latest edition of the News of the Highlands that you're not doing any action regarding the taking away the fluoride in the water. And the other article on the front page is about the $50 surcharge per billing. And if the $50 is going to keep, or is going to fix the fluoride issue that you have and keep fluoride in, I'm okay with it. There was a good comment that an apartment house should, has many housing units, it should be more than just a one hookup. That's something to consider. There was another comment about somehow tying the surcharge to property values. That could be equitable to a lot of people. Thanks for listening.
Mr. Koppa. I'm the same question that the first gentleman spoke about. What is the surcharge going to be used for? I didn't hear any response.
Yeah, it's public comment, and then we're going to go through the whole thing. I'll read the whole thing, but it was in the paper. It's funded for capital improvement.
Capital improvement with regard to water or capital improvement with regard to roads or something else?
It's for the water plant.
For the water plant.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Anybody else? No?
I'm different subject.
Just, it's just a public hearing on this right now, but we'll have a spot where you can talk about the agenda item. Anybody else I know of that? No? Yeah, I was the PD door, so I don't know. I'll give it one more minute if you guys are okay with that.
Just a question, if it, doesn't have to be answered. On this, are we maybe focusing a little bit on the issue with the groundwater? I mean, is that, is this maybe focused a little bit on, hey, let's?
I'm going to, I'll answer that question.
Okay.
Okay, I just, sure, Ms. Lee, go ahead.
Ask me, lady, let's go.
Is, since March, since the election, when asked about the brown water, it was political, whatever it wasn't, I was told there was testing that gets done regularly. If all these people have brown water and they've never been tested, is there like a quality control that the village has? This is, oh, seven Center Street has never been tested, or whatever street? Is there any kind of statistics like that? From the water testing, like, does it get, I get our year, we get like a yearly pass or fail or, and everything that's in it, but is there anywhere you could look and see the periodic samples?
Okay. If we're okay, if everybody's okay in the room, I just need a motion to close the public hearing. Motion by trustee Garjulo, is there a second? By trustee Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. A couple of quick comments. We're going to talk more about this whole process and what the funds were for, are, would be, that are being proposed, that are going to be for. I have some recommendations tonight to reduce the amount. I have a recommendation to potentially wait till the next billing comes out instead of this one that's going to come out in the next couple of weeks. The comments tonight about regarding groundwater, it is concerning to us because it does happen in what appears to be some isolated areas. It's not everywhere, it's in certain spots. Now, those certain spots are probably in areas where the distribution pipes are probably eldest, or oldest. We have done a lot of work over the last 20, 30 years, but some of the infrastructure that was put in place is 70, 80 years old. So it's a constant thing to do. The money that this is being referred to is not for operations, which it would mean it's not part of the 150%. The 150% that the residents of Fort Montgomery pay is part of our revenue to operate the plant. This is not that. These monies will not be buried in operations. I suggested doing it this way, so it's the most transparent, it'll show on your bill. It's going for capital improvements. Now, what are those capital improvements? It could be anything from, I consider, a 10-year or more item that needs to be fixed, replaced, fixed or replaced. The meters that are in most homes, if not all homes in the village, are well over 10 years old. And every time we do a billing cycle, we lose hundreds of signals from these meters. The cost to do the meters in one shot, now we put in for grants, we were unsuccessful for the meters, we're successful in other areas for grants, but to do all the meters in one shot is roughly $600,000. Now, if I do all those in one shot at $600,000, there's no, there's not that type of revenue that's created in how we operate the plant for operations and distribution. So we have to go and borrow the money. And there's nothing wrong with borrowing the money. I don't have an issue with borrowing the money. But you have to pay the borrowing back. So is it more prudent to hit every homeowner with a $250 fee to replace the meter? No, I don't think that would be fair to anybody, especially myself in this room, because I would have to pay it. But the plan is to try to get into the process of putting a little bit of money away so that we can do these things over time, so that we don't get into borrowing money for something that's smaller, small right of fixed. We're still going to have to go borrow money. We're going to talk about that tonight, because I have another water project at the south end of town we need to do. And I also have a lower Bog Meadow dam to repair, which we did get a grant for, but we're going to have to lay some money out to do that. So this money, this $50 that's proposed, again, I'm going to recommend that we reduce that money after working on another project, which the board is aware about, but I'm not ready to discuss yet because it's kind of in contractual negotiations, is that we are trying to put a little something away to deal with these bigger items. And I understand the $50 is a lot. I'm not trying to minimalize it at all. That's why tonight I'll suggest $37.50, which would bring it to $75 for the year. I'm also, you know, in light of the government shutdown and all the other things that may be going, and I don't know who exactly is all affected with that, maybe we hold off until the following bill and give some folks some more time. But at the end of the day, I'm just sitting up here trying to get the board to understand, so that the whole community can understand, that this is going to be something down the road that we're going to have to do. And that's why I'm glad people came tonight to talk about it. This whole process of the public hearing might seem trivial to some, but it's not to me. I actually like hearing when it's something we don't necessarily agree on. But this is coming down the pipe, okay? So whether I go borrow the money and bury it in an operational cost, which then you don't get to see as clearly, or I separate it out on the bill and say, hey, $37.50, $37.50 is going to go towards better lines, so we don't have brown water on Chestnut. It's going to go to a new meter that's going to be able to link to my phone and tell me if I have a leak at my house if I'm away. It's going to go towards whatever I need to do at the sewer plant, make sure the fluoride's working and functioning and properly done in the building, working on filters that we need to replace. Whatever the infrastructure or capital improvement that we need to do, we have to chip away at it a little bit at a time. Now, I have no problem doing it in one shot, but even if we do it in one shot, I have to pay that debt back, just so everyone understands. And for my brothers and sisters down in Fort Montgomery, if you, if, I love being able to supply you water, but there's real costs involved. And I know the town board doesn't want to go into those real costs, which is why that contract, which was negotiated when I was just a wee lad, was negotiated and come to terms on. But the 150% that the town pays or residents outside the village pay is for operational costs, it's for distribution of the actual water. And they don't have that much of an issue with brown water down in Fort Montgomery because their lines are all PVC, because they've been done in the last 15 years. So as we continue to do more and more projects, yes, they cost money, yes, we can do it, yes, we're going to have to pay a little more. It's a, it's an unhappy thing, and it's not something that's comfortable, and I get it. And I, for one, would rather do a little bit at a time instead of hitting everyone with a big number. I'm a firm believer in that. And I think it's better to be able to plan with just one fee instead of putting it on a cost that we go per gallon. In addition to that, and I did speak to Mr. Livsey today, and he got me thinking for a while about it, the cost for me to bring water to your home, to your front door, whether it's a 10 multifamily or a single-family home, the cost for me to bring the pipe to your door is the same for a single-family as it is for a multifamily. Now, when we talk about billing for operational and distribution costs next year, we definitely need to look at how we charge different parcels of property. I do agree that if you have an apartment complex that has 30 units in it, maybe there should be a small fee for each door that's affected by the water that's getting brought to that main parcel. That's definitely something we should look at. And those monies will offset single-family homeowners who do pay, who pay their more than fair share. So that is all going to be looked at, and how we do billing is going to be looked at. You know, Mr., God bless his soul, Mr. McCormick used to be a big proponent of quarterly billing. Now, the folks down in Village Hall may tar and feather me because, you know, we have limited staff, but it may be something that we look for towards the future. And we are trying to get more creative on how it's, to make it easier for you, for all the folks in this community to pay, which is hopefully what the new website will help provide as we continue to get that up and running. But at the very minimum, it's just to get everybody on the same page, to understand where we're at, okay? I don't like to hear people come up and say they have brown water, because I don't have that issue. I have it when we flush hydrants, everybody may experience that at that time, but other than that, I don't have that issue. And it really, really bothers me, and I know it bothers the board when we have someone come up here and say that they do. I mean, these are just basic things. You should be able to flush the toilet, and you should be able to drink the water. So believe me, when I, it's very, a serious issue for us, and that's why we're talking about this. So that's just my comments in regards to that. I have public comment on agenda items. We're actually going to move the agenda around because like number three, number seven, and number eight, and number nine is going to be lengthy conversations, I am sure. So we're just going to take care of the other housekeeping stuff first, but there aren't, right now, it's public comment on agenda items. Public hearing's already closed. Anybody? Okay, I just have a small amount of bills and claims to approve, warrant number 2505A for fiscal year 2526. Total amount is $1,577.63. I need a motion and a second to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Motion by trustee Ramus, seconded by trustee Garjulo, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. We have minutes from the last October 6th meeting. I checked them out, they look pretty good. Need a motion to approve the minutes? Motion by trustee Garjulo, is there a second? Seconded by trustee Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That's pretty good. Guys are taking up a long room. Okay, so one and two is good. We're going to go to four. Approve 13th Annual Trump Retreat, 2nd Annual Halloween Parade sponsored by the Town of Highlands Chamber of Commerce on Friday, October 31, 2025, from 3:45 PM to 6:30 PM on Main Street utilizing municipal lot number two and Memorial Park. That's a change.
It's just starting at Memorial Park.
Starts at Memorial and goes that way? Okay. I need a motion and a second and a vote.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Olivia.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Ramus, all in favor?
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carried. This is always a good thing, and before we, I mention it, I just want to say, we've had four new members at the Highland Falls Fire Department, and we are going on a tear with recruitment, so I thank those folks, it's all volunteer, and, you know, when something happens and you dial the number, they show up, so, and it's younger folks, and that's always fantastic. So I have approved Highland Falls Fire Department new members Larry Dunn and Greg Rogers. Greg Rogers will be a junior member, as recommended by the Highland Falls Fire Department Chief Eric Smith. They have passed required background checks and were approved by the HFFD. I need a motion and a second.
They're volunteer members?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
They all are.
Motion.
Motion by trustee Garjulo.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Olivia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Next thing on the list is, we've been having inherent problems with internet in regards to time order cable or spectrum, whatever you want to call them. They seem to be able to cash either check if you write it. So we're going to go to this new company. I know, we actually have it in the building now at the police department, and they seem to be running well with it. I know there's a couple of businesses on Main Street that have it as a primary and that they don't have issues with it, but there's days where we're down, or we're down during the night and recommended by IT for security reasons, et cetera, et cetera. We got three months for free in negotiations with them, which I thought was pretty good. I just need a motion and a second for myself or the deputy mayor to sign the Crown Castle fiber internet contract.
Is this in lieu of the Greenlight or in the term of that?
No, it's, we don't, we didn't set up to have internet from Greenlight, we negotiated a higher rental amount from them. So moved by trustee Garjulo, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Carroll, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I just have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Is the megabytes per second, is this comparable to what Spectrum was already giving us, or is it more or less?
Much more comparable.
Okay.
And probably, most definitely, we won't have as many interruptions and/or days without service. I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Number seven is requesting the Orange County Legislature to exempt property owned by the village and integral to the village's municipal water system for the county real property taxes for year 2027. This is a routine item. It's a resolution. It says of the village of Highland Falls, port of trustees, requesting the Orange County Legislature to exempt property owned by the village to the village municipal water system from the county real property taxes for the year 2027. Whereas the village of Highland Falls and the village of Highland Falls Water Department jointly own property in the town of Highlands that is integral to the village's water system, which property is identified in the Town of Highlands Tax Map, Section 1, Block 1, Lot 2, also known as Bog Meadow. Now therefore be resolved as follows. By this resolution, the village board does hereby request that the Orange County Legislature exempt Section Block 1-1-2 from the county real property taxes for calendar year 2027, that the village board hereby directs that a certified copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Orange County Legislature. Attention to Gene Rampin, clerk, at 255 Main Street, 2nd floor, Gosha, New York, 10924. I need a motion.
Motion.
Trustee Ramus, seconded by trustee Garjulo. I need a roll call.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Garjulo?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Mayor DeSala?
Yes. Okay, we're going to, we're going to come back to eight. And we're going to come back to nine. Yes, so number 10 is going to be, not that one, it's going to be this one. Okay, yes, it's a resolution. Are the village Highland Falls Board of Trustees authorizing Scenic Hudson to administer all agreements between the village and contractors and/or vendors related to the work necessary to create, maintain, and manage Highland Falls Preserve. Whereas Scenic Hudson owns approximately 31.8 acres of real property located at Havens Road in the village of Highland Falls, New York, which property is identified as tax parcel SBL 105-5-6.212. And whereas pursuant to general municipal law 103, the village may periodically cause specifications and related contract documents to be circulated for various activities necessary to the proper maintenance and management of the preserve, including but not limited to the construction of fence and gates, trimming and clearing of trees, trail maintenance, structure. to the construction of fence and gates, trimming and clearing of trees, trail maintenance, structure maintenance, construction and maintenance of parking areas, and so forth. Now therefore be resolved that the village of Highland Falls hereby authorize Scenic Hudson to prepare specifications for said work, manage the public bidding process, and administer the resulting agreements between the village and successful contractors. And they also will adhere to our procurement policy. So a motion by trustee?
Motion.
Ramus, seconded by trustee?
Gargulo.
Gargulo? I need a roll call, unless there's any discussion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Gargulo?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSala?
Yes. What?
So, just so everybody knows, on Saturday, they did have a work party down there at the preserve. They had eight cadets and some other representatives from some trail committees, along with Heather, who has spearheaded this project. They'd done a tremendous amount of work that day. I suggest anybody that wants to take a look at some of the pictures that we're going to post on the website, some before and afters. There's a couple of them here. They put a lot of mulch down, they raked out a lot of the debris, they're working on the large granite stairs as well, and the cadets did a phenomenal job with the stairs. So if you want, that's probably like one of the better pictures. Can't wait to see the plants that they did put in as well start to take root.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next on the agenda is general, a village election, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-six, twelve P.M. to nine P.M., Highland Falls Senior Center, fifteen Drew Avenue. Whereas the next village election for offices will be held on Wednesday, March eighteenth, twenty-twenty-six, and that the office to be filled and the terms thereof for the village of Highland Falls are as follow: one trustee for a term of one year. Whereas no person shall be entitled to vote in any village election whose name does not appear on the register of the election district in which he or she claims to entitled to vote, and now therefore be it resolved that for the first, excuse me, first for the purpose of said forthcoming general village election, the entire village shall constitute a single election district. Second, as set forth in this resolution in accordance with section fifteen dash one oh four three, voting for the upcoming general election shall be conducted at the senior center, fifteen Drew Avenue, from noon until nine P.M. At least four months prior to the general village elections, as set forth in the resolution, the village clerk shall, in accordance with section fifteen dash one oh four three A of the New York State election law, publish in the official newspaper, news of the Highlands, a notice designating the offices, or office, to be filled, and the term thereof, and shall post a copy of this resolution in at least one conspicuous place, place in the village election district. And at least ten days prior to the general village election, as set forth in this resolution, the village clerk shall, in accordance with section fifteen dash one oh four sub three six and four of the New York State election law, cause a public notice to be published and posted, stating the polling place of the said village election district, the hours in which the polls shall be open, the names and addresses of candidates' offices and terms nominated, and an abstract of any provision, propositions to be voted upon. This resolution shall take place immediately. I need a motion by?
Motion.
Trustee Gargulo, seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Carol, on a roll call vote which resulted in the following.
Trustee Ramus?
Yay.
Trustee Olivia?
Yes.
Trustee Gargulo?
Yes.
Trustee Carol?
Yes.
Mayor DeSala?
Yes. All right. Next is number twelve, which is accept the retirement of full-time DPW supervisor David Hurst, effective October twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five. Usually when we have these, we say with regret, but as my board members and fellow folks in the audience will see, he's back here with us on number thirteen. But Mr. Hurst has worked for the village of Highland Falls for almost, not almost as old as I am, but for a very long time. He's been a great asset in both sewer plant, he started at DPW, went to the sewer plant, now he's back at DPW. He does a great job. In fact, the old DPW, which trustee Gargulo will mention, did a great job today on, on some sidewalks on Drew Avenue, but we're going to accept his full-time position as Department of Public Works Supervisor on October twenty-seventh. Need a motion?
Motion.
Trustee Gargulo, I need a second. Trustee Carol, all in favor?
Aye, yes.
All opposed? Motion carried.
Does that mean he has to stay?
Well, so, next number, item thirteen is approve reduced hours for DPW supervisor David Hurst at a salary of thirty-three thousand annually, effective October twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-five. I need a motion. Motion by trustee Gargulo, seconded by trustee Carol. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number fifteen is regularly scheduled board meeting on Monday, November third. We're going to change it to just eight-thirty for bills and claims. You guys okay with that? Just need a motion and a second. Trustee Olivia, seconded by?
Second.
Trustee Ramus, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, fifteen. All right, so let's talk about, what you guys want to talk about first? You want to talk about number three, you want to talk about number eight, you want to talk about number nine? I think some of the folks in the room want us to talk about number three first. So, to establish a continuously funded capital improvement project for the little John Falls. As I mentioned in my initial remarks, what the monies, what this money will be used for? It will be used for capital improvements. Now, those capital improvements can be anything from, and I put a ten-year number on it, just because for accounting purposes, usually if it's a ten-year expenditure, it's considered a capital improvement. So, that would be water meters, the new water meters that we got, we actually bought a hundred of them, so we're, we're starting that process, I think, next week, which is great. And it would go towards anything. It would go through distribution lines, it would go through, it would go for any type of major improvement at the water plant. My suggestion was initially fifty dollars a bill, I, after working some numbers and working on another project, which the board is somewhat informed of, and we're going to talk more about tonight, and executive session, because it's contractual, I would recommend thirty-seven fifty per bill. In addition to that, and after speaking to some residents and the folks here tonight, and understanding that while we, when we started this process, you know, the government wasn't shut down, or was looming to shut down, that maybe we should start this at the next billing cycle. So it gives folks a little more time. Now, I, I've spoken to all the members individually on the board, and I understand, believe me when I tell you, I don't take this haphazardly. It's something that we're, you know, we, during election time, and during times when people get frustrated, we always talk about planning, and planning, and forecasting, and trying to get a better hold on things. Well, this is part of it. This is part of it. And I, I don't want to bury it in operational costs, because I don't think that's fair to the residents. And I do agree that how we do billing will be totally discussed more when we do, when we start the, when we start doing budget time, which I already have started. So, I mean, that would be my recommendation. Again, not fifty dollars a bill, thirty-seven fifty, and to start it not at the billing that's going to go out in the next couple weeks, but start it six months from now, when it would go out. That would be my two recommendations. That's my opinion, that's my comment, I'm one voting member on the board, but the problems that we all talked about tonight, whether it's brown water, whether it's this or that, are not going to go away. So, just keep that in mind. And we've had a public hearing on, we've already had a public hearing on it. I'll let Ms. Snow talk, because she came in late, but other than that, we're, we're good.
Thank you for that.
No problem. And I know you're going to browbeat me to death, so that's fine, and that's why I'm letting you talk. See that? See what a nice guy I am?
You're a nice guy.
Yeah, I'm going to let you beat me up right ahead.
I love all of you guys.
I appreciate that. Lot of love in this room. Three minutes, though, Ms. Snow, three minutes.
Anyway, two-part. One is a question, and one is a, a statement. The first question, I, I asked it a couple times, thank you for always having that Facebook thing. Did the price of the provider who's taking care of the operations go up, and is that price being passed down to us?
The, the contract that has been approved by the board for the company that runs the plan, does go up annually, a small percentage, but this, these, this, this money?
I know, I know.
Hold on a second, let me finish. The money that we're talking about is, has nothing to do with operational costs.
I, I get it.
Okay.
But how much a percentage is it going up for December? Or is it going to be the same? Is it going to be the same as what it was in May?
It, it goes up, I, I don't, I don't follow what you mean.
Okay.
I hate doing this back and forth, so maybe I'll, I'll answer, you can be more clear with your question.
The, the contract, was, was it from January through December? Or have they raised their prices after May, so that the price increase is being passed on to us for our December water bill? That's, I'm just asking about water.
The answer to that question is no.
Okay, that's what I want. Because if you were adding a surcharge on top of that, it would be like?
No, no, this is not.
Totally unreasonable.
Just for clarification, there's no change in the amount for your, the distribution of what you're paying for.
Okay.
This is not for operational costs. That is not changing. The board's not changing that.
That, that I knew. I, my question didn't have to do with the surcharge, it has to do with the, with the contract of the provider, and whether it's going up for, in December, and if that price was being, okay, I wanted to know that. Fifty dollars, right now, it's, it's a lot. If you can cut it down, I, I'm appreciative of the fact that you're proactive. I'm, and you said it, you said it three months ago, that if the fluoride wasn't taken away, you'd have to raise the prices to fix something, or everything. So I get it, you're trying to, the water is, it rained last night, the water was a little brown. You know, it, you're doing your best, and you're trying, but fifty dollars every six months is, it just is too much for the regular person, okay? So, cut it down to bare bones, and then, and then we'll, we'll let you have it. Thank you, thank you very much.
So I just, just because Ms. Snow came in late, I don't know what you did hear or didn't hear, I, you know, we started, when we started this, it was a couple weeks ago when we did the resolution, and it had to go in the paper, and that's just part of the governmental timing. I had gone back, I had mentioned to the board that after working some numbers out, that I had recommended to go to thirty-seven fifty per billing cycle. And that also in regards to government shutdowns, and giving everybody a little more time to plan, that we hold off on this bill and start it six months from now. So the next bill you would get is in May. So it would affect your May bill.
That would be fair.
So those, those would be the two recommended, recommended changes I would make, to look, to change it from fifty to thirty-seven fifty, and to start it at the May billing.
One, one quick question.
Okay, Mr. Copol.
Thank you. How much at fifty dollars per unit, did you anticipate you would raise?
I think the magic number I was looking for was roughly about a hundred and thirty thousand to go towards. Because we, when we bought a hundred meters, it cost us roughly fifty grand, and then I figured if we have to do some work with the fluoride, that might be thirty or forty grand, so that would cover like doing something every year. And then if we want to try to replace a pipe in the ground, and on one section of street, it may be fifty thousand or seventy-five thousand. So it's just, it's, it's a game of Chinese water torture. It's small drops every year to try to do something.
Thank you. I would recommend that if we are amending this to the flat charge, not fifty, but thirty-seven fifty, you did speak about a sunset of ten years? Can we?
No.
Can we put that in there?
So I wouldn't do ten, I would say let's, if, if, I would say, since we're going to start it a little later, I initially said three years, we would look at it again, but I would say let's do for four years, since we're going to start it six months later, and then we could revote on it again.
And I, I agree with that, because projects are going to continually come up.
Yeah.
But if we could put then four years in here, and then revisit it?
Can we do that?
Can we do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would do four, and do May of twenty-third, twenty?
To May of?
Yeah, so May, we start for May of twenty-twenty-six, and then we would revisit it, let's say, April of twenty-thirty.
Uh, okay. Well, it'll sunset May twenty-thirty, you can, you can start looking at it.
Got it.
You want an automatic sunset of May twenty-thirty?
Okay.
Unless renewed?
Yeah, unless renewed.
Okay.
Is that open-ended?
What does that mean?
I'm asking because I know there's, we had committed to the membership for the DSET grant, that, that, the Defense Community Infrastructure Program, and we haven't tapped into that at all.
If we land something big that we can do, we could always, this can always get shut down.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so it's an open-ended.
It's, it doesn't, this isn't life, this isn't, this isn't.
It's not a local audit.
No.
It's just a resolution that.
That's it. So if we, if we hit something big, where we get a big grant, and we can do twenty-five streets in one shot, and we get a grant from the, yeah, if, if I get a grant tomorrow for, for six hundred grand to do meters, then, then this can, we could shave a year off for something else, you know, or put it to something else, or reduce the amount. That, believe me, that's not a problem at all.
Yeah, because again, that Defense Community Infrastructure Program.
Someone should start.
And AOG.
We are doing that all the time.
Okay, sounds good.
I'm, I'm done with, no more questions, please.
I'm just saying that, that infrastructure program, and AOG's been very vocal about helping us with the infrastructure, especially water.
Yeah.
To maintain usable water. So, I think we have not tapping into bigger things, too, and I think we have a lot to do moving forward.
We do, we are very aggressive with grants, but grants are, are not guaranteed, and they're, we're not the only ones putting in for them. So that's exactly why we didn't get the grant for the meter, like, there's other communities that are in, believe it or not, worse shape than we are, and they got the money.
No, I'm, I'm speaking directly about this defense.
We, yeah, and so we, we've never been a part of that organization, we just joined, so, yeah.
Yeah, we just dove into it, so I think that's going to be, again, they have been very, very vocal about helping us with that kind of infrastructure.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I feel positive about it.
As long as it's open-ended?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, I mean, there's other projects. We still have phase two of the South End.
Yep.
As well, that we really need to think about. Based on some quick, simple math, for the four years, it should be about three hundred and eighty-some odd thousand dollars for the village residents alone, and then whatever we get from the town will also help benefit this project.
So just so the board knows, I'll probably have, maybe by next meeting, or, I'm sorry, the, the second meeting in November, us to authorize not to actually spend, but I have two big projects that we have to do. One is the phase two of the water project that we started at Ondera Park, which takes care of the southern part of the, of the village. And also, we got a grant for, to do lower Bog Meadow. There's two dams, there's Lower Bog and there's Upper Bog. So we got a two million dollar grant for Lower Bog. So we do, we do get some grants, but we have to lay some of the money out for that grant, and then we'll get it replenished. So in speaking with bond counsel and our bonding company, we may put the whole thing together, and then we'll only, we'll authorize the full amount, but we'll only take, we'll only actually borrow what we need. So, so that'll be, it's coming down the pipe, too. And this, these costs will, this revenue will offset those costs. Again, better to see it on your bill where the money's going than versus just putting it into the general, and then it disappearing into just operations. And even though, regardless of how we do, how we vote on tonight, as we move forward with billing, I'd like to see how we can break down the bills a little more. Again, the folks in the village are all going to tar and feather me, but just so you folks all can see where the money's actually going, operations and distribution. The town does it a little differently, because the town has districts. So like, there's folks in different districts in the town that So like, there's folks in different districts in the town that may not even get water, but they're in the district and they'll pay bonding, they'll pay the bonding that the, that the town has put in for, or that they have for the water district. Even though they don't actually get the water, they actually have to pay for the bond. And I've mentioned this before, I was on the town board my first go-around, and Mrs. Diroff came in, and she was in the sewer district, but she was never going to get sewer, never going to get sewer where she lives. But she was in the district, and so she had to pay the bond. And I remember my, it was my second or third meeting, and we had to vote on that. And I love Mrs. Diroff, God bless her, but she scared the hell out of me that night. And we still had to vote on it, and because she was in the district, she had to pay. Imagine that, that you're in a district, you have to pay for the bonding, but you'll never have sewer. So that's the difference. Well, true. But anyway, not to go off on a sentimental story, but, so those two projects will be coming down the road too, because especially the Part Two of the water project, the company that's been, that did the project, that started the project roughly two years ago, is holding their price for us. So that's a huge savings for us going down the road.
But that's only going to last for so long.
But that's only going to last for so long. So they want to see that we're in, at least going to be moving forward with that, and I think that will happen with a bond resolution. So anyway, that, those are my comments about that. I don't know what the board would like to do. I mean, again, so the, just to clarify, it would be reduced from fifty to thirty-seven fifty. We have the sunset clause in there, that it would end unless we took action in twenty-thirty, May of twenty-thirty. It doesn't start until the next billing cycle. So it gives everybody a little more time to plan for that expense. I don't know if the rest of the board has any changes you want to make? Are we okay? Are we not okay? I would say thirty-seven fifty for right now would be the minimum I would go, but things could change in the next six months, and then we could always alter it. Yeah, it's okay, it's all right.
Okay. So I appreciate that you are suggesting to push this to the next billing cycle and not this one, because that was one of my concerns personally, that we were not giving notice, sufficient notice of any kind for this fee. I understand what it is that you're trying to accomplish with this, and I do not oppose funding the repairs, because they're very clearly needed. But I do oppose funding them without a solid plan. I understand that you're saying here's a handful of different things that this fund could be going towards, but not seeing it in a, this is where it's going, this is a timeline, these are estimated costs. That doesn't feel like a full plan to me. And I do understand too, we're kind of put in this kind of catch-22 situation where the system desperately needs upgrades, but those upgrades cost money, and it feels like a slap in the face to ask residents to pay more for a system that's not meeting our basic expectations when you have brown water so often. So this one is a little difficult for me. I would have liked to have seen some of the meters that we've already purchased be installed, and then this discussion be had. That way we can see what kind of difference those new meters are actually going to make on our system, because right now, we are estimating a very large portion of what our water billing is. So updating those meters, there could be a significant change in either direction, which we really don't know as of right now, because bills are estimated, and they have been for quite some time, and there's more and more being estimated every billing cycle. So I would suggest that we table this for now and make a decision moving forward after we get some more of these, more procedure in place.
I, whatever the, listen, whatever the board wants to do, all right? Because each of us are elected up here, and we're all going to have to answer to you folks out there. Now, we can, we can wait if you want, which is why I'm suggesting wait it till the next billing cycle, but I, you know, you all know right now what the cost is just to do meters. It's a minimum of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So there's your plan, right there. If that money's just going for that, there's your plan. So we bought a hundred meters at fifty grand. Do the math, we have eleven-hundred-and-eighty-seven metered homes in the Village Island Falls.
So where are those, have we decided where those meters are actually going?
Right now, it was, we took care of a list of folks who came in first, and then after that, we're just going down the line. I mean, there's eight hundred meters that aren't reading. Like, this problem's not going away, it's just manifesting.
But I'm asking, like, how do you decide who's getting the meters? People are actually coming in saying, I need them.
It's going towards folks that, we only have a hundred, so we're going to do a hundred. So it, it, it's...
Well, that's where I have to agree with trustee Olivia, that we're really not categorically defining, you know, what we're actually doing, because this is part of my notes too, and I'm going to draw it up, we're not categorically defining how benefits the community can really put this fee in place. And I think, you know, I, I look up, and this is out of the, out of the wheel box, but I look up at Curious Joel, and I don't understand how Curious Joel gets New York City to bring water up, and they get grants for that. I don't think we're aggressively looking at, at, I think we're late to the game, and I think we're trying to play catch-up, and that is a hard situation to be in. But I think we're not being like, hyper vigilant on this. Like, this is something that we really should be really kind of saying, look, listen, again, look at that defense grant, look at, where did Curious Joel get their funding from? Like, who gave them that grant to do that? I'm just saying, I just don't know.
Yeah, but, and I have no problem with soundbites, and I think it's fine, but...
There's probably a soundbite.
Well, it sort of is, because you're comparing Curious Joel with the Village Island Falls, right? So in thirty...
Something like water from New York City.
Thirty-seven fifty, well, we don't need a tie-in for the aqueduct.
I know that, but I'm just saying.
And thirty-seven, thirty-seven dollars and fifty cents is not, is not me coming to you and saying, you know, we lost engine four on the seven forty-seven, and we're going down. So I mean, like, again, whatever the board wants to do, but as we've heard some folks tonight, brown water on Chestnut, brown water wherever he's talking about, if you, if you guys don't want to move on it, that's fine. That's totally fine.
But it's not going to cure that problem, because listen, you're in like thirty-seven...
But I can't get you to move on thirty-seven fifty. How am I going to get you to move on putting new lines in, on Chestnut?
So...
Whatever you guys want to do.
At thirty-seven fifty?
We're just asking about...
No, I'm good. I don't take any of this to heart, like I said.
No, I know, I'm just, I'm just saying.
At thirty-seven fifty? That's seventy-five dollars a year. It breaks down to twenty cents a day. And as far as the way some water is distributed, I believe in, in, Mr. Selleck, correct me if I'm wrong, that there was supposed to be a water loop in Orange County that we were supposed to be in, but that's never going to come to fruition, just like unfortunately the story about the sewer from Mrs. Diroff. We've been told that we're not going to be able to tap into that loop.
Well, I'm saying no, I just don't see a defined...
I want to touch on the numbers just a little bit. You went backwards as to what it comes down to a day, but if we work the other direction, we have eleven-hundred-and-eighty-seven meters. At thirty-seven fifty per billing cycle, that comes to eighty-nine thousand twenty-five dollars per year. You do that at a three-year term, that's two-hundred-and-sixty-seven thousand seventy-five dollars. Now, if we were going to put that even just towards the meter project, you're talking over six years before we get that done.
But you're not including the residents in the town.
Yeah, that's just the village ones.
Just the village ones.
So...
Well, I understand. Sure.
I'd just like to address very quickly, you have to be careful about how you set money aside. If you're collecting money for a capital project, a named capital project, that money must go in a separate named capital project fund. So for example, if you said, okay, that, we're going to collect this money, and it's only going to be, our plan is to use it for the water meters, then you can't use it for anything else. So it's, it's, it's how, and bond counsel could probably provide more about this, but I can tell you that capital improvement funds, the money in those can only be used specifically for the purpose for which they were collected. So if you have a general collection for general funds, then as things come up, then you have some money that you can draw on. That's just...
So we're on question, if you might?
Yeah, you're not, you're not, right?
Just to put it in terms I'll understand better, if I name a, if I name a capital project, like, let's just, I don't want to harp, I don't want to harp on the water meters, but if I just said, we're going to collect thirty-seven fifty per bill for water meters, then that thirty-seven fifty can only go towards water meters. Whereas if we come up with another plan, or the other item that I'm working on, which you guys are all aware of, could possibly go, that could go towards water meters, and this could go towards replacing a set of lines on a street. You know, so again, I, I don't think I'm, I'm not frustrated with the board or anything. You guys all have a voice, and you're all part of the board, so it's okay if you don't want to do it, but I just, if, if folks come up and ask for answers, we're going to tell them, we don't really have any, because we're just, we're not going to do anything right now. And that's fine if that's the decision of the board. No, I can't. So that's fine if you want to do it that way. I, I don't have a problem with it, but there are some people that might have a problem with it, because they're still having issues. So if you guys want to hold off, that's fine. We would be holding off on doing the billing anyway. I would recommend doing it, and at least if we, we can always change it, if something happens between now and May, we can always change it. Don't think I'm one of those people that won't change it if, if, if something happens. I don't want to do this. This is not a want. This is something that we need to do.
Can we have another talk session?
Well, I think transparency has to be defined, really, what it's, what's, like, every time something happens, well, this is what...
It is, it's for funded for capital improvement program.
No, I understand, but I'm just saying, down the line, well, what did we do this week? Like, I'm just saying.
Oh, I, I have no problem saying that, hey, we bought another hundred meters, and we used fifty thousand dollars. Hey, we're, we're replacing a, a panel at the water plant for fifty thousand dollars. Like, we're going to, there's no more public comment. We, we had public, we had a public hearing.
I think that's more palatable to know exactly where it's going.
Yeah, that, but that's where it's going, to capital improvements.
Just in water?
That's it.
Like a reserve?
Correct. It's not going to affect your sewer bill, none of that. It's just going to the water, plant, and/or distribution, capital improvements. That's it. And we would start it six months from now.
Yeah.
But we don't go over the district.
It's like six, it's six-fourteen.
Yeah, but I was just saying, we don't have any in the district.
It's six-fourteen meter.
I'm just trying to link to...
I get it.
That we're reaching into the same pockets for everything.
Yeah.
And at some point, those pockets end. And...
Okay.
That's, that's a struggle for me to push that.
Okay. So no motion, no second, no nothing? Going once, going twice?
Can we digest it and then bring it back up on the next agenda, sir?
Whatever you guys want to do.
With maybe some more clarification, I think that's what I'm hearing.
Sure.
I really would like to see at least the first set of meters installed, and see what kind of change that makes to our water income, and then bring this up again.
Okay. Numbers, we're going to go to number eight next. Which one's this? Hold on a second. This is the zoning law changes, okay. This should be a healthy discussion. Okay, so the, the, the local law you have in front of you, which we're going to set a public hearing for after we come to terms with what changes we want to make. Talk about a few things, and just to highlight for the board. And the, and the attorney can jump in as she, she should. So the, the height of the structures of buildings would go from forty-eight to fifty feet. The height of seventy feet in the, I believe it's the R5A zone, which I think is the, basically, it's the section of housing...
Senior center?
Senior, senior center housing.
That'll go to the same as...
Would go to the same as everything else, which would be fifty if this passes. Right now, the senior housing is at seventy feet. I'm not exactly sure why, but that's why they had it. So that would take care of the height.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, mayor.
Am I missing something?
Well, I must be missing something, because I haven't seen a change from forty-eight to fifty.
Is that not on here?
I haven't seen that either. No. Yeah, I was, yeah, I was not asked to put that in.
Okay.
But I, that's up to the board, you can make that change.
Yeah, okay, that was, that's okay, I'm glad we're talking about it now. So it's a reduction of seventy feet permitted by senior citizen multifamily housing. It was a, it was a height change from forty-eight to fifty for commercial buildings in the B1.
Okay.
And for the definition of mixed use, we, we cleaned that up. And right now, in a, in the B1 zone, in the commercial space, the bottom floor, a hundred percent of the ground floor is to be used for, is to be dedicated to revenue-producing uses. And I had just put in some two arbitrary numbers, which I knew were going to be changed. My initial comment in regards to changing the commercial, the first floor commercial spot, so right now, a hundred percent has to be for commercial use. And my initial comment was, the numbers that are in there, which is seventy-five and twenty-five, which are way too aggressive. But in my, in my thinking, I'm saying, if you wanted to put a residential unit on the ground floor, I would be okay personally with a twenty-five percent reduction in commercial space. If you wanted to create more parking on the bottom floor, however you do it, however your design is, then you could get up to a fifty percent reduction. So it's a little change from the initial numbers, because those numbers, after talking to some trustees, were a little out of, a little out of whack. But, so if you, so just like, take, take the Key Bank building, just as, just as an example. The Key Bank building is roughly sixteen thousand square feet. So let's say usable space is seven and seven, so seven thousand on the top floor, seven thousand on the bottom floor. If they wanted to put a residential unit or units on the bottom floor, they could get a twenty-five percent reduction. This is what I'm saying. In commercial space. So they get twenty-five percent off the seven thousand, if they wanted to put another unit in. If they wanted to create more parking, let's say they wanted to bring, raise the building to the ground and put a new design up, then they could, and they wanted to put some parking underneath, then they could get up to a fifty percent reduction. And the reason why...
Would they still get the twenty-five? In other words, the question is, okay, I want to put a dwelling, so I get the twenty-five percent. I also want parking, so I get another fifty, or it's either or?
No, I think it's either or. That would be my version, it's either or. And the only reason why I went to this is because there was two buildings being built in Goshen that I happened to, got interested in and kept on going by there, started, the construction guys started calling me by my first name, which is great. But one building had, they put parking underneath the bottom floor, which worked for them, but I think it was, it's all residential. It's not, there's no commercial space. But they put parking underneath, like a parking garage, which was pretty good, because Goshen has very similar issues that we have with parking. And that was on the one side of the road, and then the other side of the road, they put in a new building where Orange County Bagel went, and they did something similar. They had, they just had one residential unit, and then they had some more parking. So it got me thinking that there may be some spots in the village where we would, we appreciate more parking, and if they have, depending on their design, they may be able to fit some more parking in, and so therefore, I would say it would be acceptable, because not everybody needs twenty-five hundred square foot of commercial space, or three thousand square foot of commercial space. But if they wanted to put some more parking in, then they would get that reduction. If they wanted to put a residential unit, because I, I firmly agree with my colleague, Mr. Ramus, who believes that if the residential on top, they should be on top, but if they wanted to put one more apartment in for whatever reason, and it made sense in the design, then they would get a little twenty-five percent reduction. I mean, to me, it kind of makes sense, but, you know, that's what I envisioned. But that's, that's the changes I would make to the local, to that, to the local law we have in front of us. I don't know what the board members feel, but please have at it, I'm sure we need to discuss it.
Sure. So the impacts of allowing residential properties on Main Street is very detrimental to our small village and street commercial vitality. It's going to reduce the availability of suitable commercial spaces. Right now, we're limited. We have changed the density to seven-hundred-and-fifty square feet of lot area per residential unit above. I'm not saying we bent over backwards, but I am saying we did look at it, a hard look at it. I wasn't comfortable with the number, but I would like to see a thousand, but seven-fifty, it's okay, because I understand that they want to make money on residential as well. well. I just don't think it's something that we should be doing, uh, on the ground floor. If anything, we should be pining for second floor office space as well, because if we had office space on the second floor, if we look at our, our code, they don't need parking for, um, in the exempt zone, uh, office space on the second floor, or the retail on the bottom floor. They would only really need parking is for their residential units on the second and third floors, which we are allowing. So, when we start to take away, uh, available commercial space and turn it into residential, that's only going to force the residents here to traverse across the mountain, because nobody's going to want to, or have the ability to open up any other spaces for commercial use here. Um, I mean, we have a historic village, and, and it's based on trying to keep this community, uh, here intact. We don't have the luxury of like, on West Point, of a utilizing the commissary or the PX, which is okay. They deserve it. They deserve every bit that we can give them. They lay down their life for us, and God bless them. But I just think we need to take care of Main Street first. And if you actually look at what, uh, some of the past comprehensive plans state, it states about revitalizing the business district by having commercial space on the first floor and residential above. And there's numerous, um, other municipalities that do that. I mean, you bring up Goshen, which is a good point, but, you know, we could go out and look at some of the things that they had recently built in Warwick. Again, uh, all commercial on the first floor, residential on the top floors. I, I believe that's smart growth, that's going to keep the charm and beauty of this small community, that people are moving here for, um, intact. We, we have the gentleman that just did the Sea Town down there. He is dumping his heart and soul and money into that establishment. You can go in there, uh, he's always friendly, and let me tell you, if there's a line, he comes right out of the back and, and he takes up another register. Those are the kind of businesses and business owners we want in a village. We just have to give them the opportunity, uh, to do that. You know, this is a gut check for us. This is something that we, you know, signed up for. And you know what? Maybe when we start to see some more of the people that, who have bought some of the larger properties, come in here and put something in, then maybe you can change my mind. But until that point in time, I want to see a hundred percent commercial on the first floor. That's my opinion for the moment.
Anybody else? You okay then?
I have to agree that I think the, um, first floor, uh, any residential on the first floor, I don't think makes sense for us. I think we're too small for that. Um, and that was a good point that you brought up, the comprehensive plan, because I was curious where these changes fell in relation to that, which I had not done that research yet, so I was curious how in line that was. A couple other things. You have a change here, and I know you wanted the change from forty-eight feet to fifty feet, and it's not actually written in here, but you do have in here a change to add, it states, "Elements not intended for human occupancy, including but not limited to chimneys, spires, vents, utilities, elevator or stair bulkheads, or black holes are excluded from the height calculation." I think that that clause would take care of the extra footage. I don't necessarily think that we need both this clause here and the raisin footage, okay? So, I think one or the other is more than appropriate. The senior citizens, multiple dwellings, reducing from the seventy down to forty-eight, I think that's more than appropriate. I would recommend that if we're, if we're putting in recommendations here to remove certain clauses or paragraphs from the zoning, um, from, from the code, I would first suggest that those particular clauses be printed out for the trustees, so that we know what you're actually asking to remove.
Do you want to move on to the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, because it's just stated here, section two-forty, twenty-nine H-one, titled, "Mixed Use Development is Modified by Deleting Subparagraph fourteen," renumbering the subsequent paragraphs from there. That one is about the home office. I had asked about this one at our last workshop. Um, I'm curious as to what the driving intention of removing these items was, because this one here is really just taking away a special permit, which permits are a revenue source. So, I'm not sure why that one would be requesting to come on. Okay, I don't think we need to be taking away any money. I don't know that anybody has put in for that type of a, a permit, but I don't see any reason to remove it. And then the next one being removed, requested to be removed, is section two-forty-thirty-two, and that's the height. Um, we're wanting to remove section B in its entirety. Again, I would just ask what the purpose of removing items from the code are. I know it does state in the code that anything not specified in the code is not permitted. But when we have detailed.
Which one are you saying not to remove?
Uh, two-forty-thirty-two height. The recommendation is to remove stage tower or scenery out of section A, and then to remove B in its entirety, which states, "No building or structure erected pursuant to subsequent A to the height in excess of the height limit for the district in which it is situated shall, one, have a lot coverage in excess of ten percent of the lot area, two, be used for residence or tenancy purposes, three, have any sign, nameplate, display, or advertising device of any kind whatsoever inscribed upon or attached to such building or structure." So, that's obviously giving restrictions to the particulars of this section, and removing it, I'm just curious what the purpose of it is.
I, I could suggest that, because it's conflicting with everything else that's in the code. So, in other words, if you have, you know, one inch over the height of forty-eight feet or fifty, whatever the board determines that it is, what that code says is, um, then you're limited, the building is limited to only ten percent.
Right.
So, that conflicts completely with, and that's a very old, I don't know where that came, that's a very old section. I'm not sure where that came from.
Yeah.
So, it's, it conflicts. But you're right, uh, uh, you know, you should see the whole, well, the whole zoning code, but, I mean, I did, you know, underline and cross out, but yeah, I'll get you a redline version.
Also, can we, you know, in the public, can we see a copy of those?
Yeah, I'm going to get there.
Before a public hearing?
Yeah. Well, a couple things. Like, the board has access, you all have a book of the zo, of all the zoning laws, so I, I would recommend that you take a look at it when you get a chance, number one. Number two, uh, the reason why we're chopping this up tonight is exactly because it's a work session, and at the, at the end of this, I know you might not agree with it, but I think once, we should clean this up and at least have a public hearing, so we can hear from the public. So, I, I'm still want to move forward with the reduction of the seventy feet, the change in the percentages. If you don't like the fifty and twenty-five, let's talk about it now. Doesn't mean we're going, we have to vote on it or it's going to pass, but we should at least put, put something together to present to the public, so the public can give us some input, like we did tonight. So, um, I, I still would like to go with the reduction of the seventy feet for the, for the senior housing.
I'm going.
Hold on, hold on, let me finish. And you could, you could chop it up any way you want. Uh, I still would like to move for the fifty percent to twenty-five percent or reduction. Fifty percent for parking, twenty-five percent for residential. And I would like to do the forty-eight to fifty feet. So, if, i- i- at least we can put something together, and the, the cleanup of some of the language, at least we can put something together to present to the public. We don't have to vote on it after that. We could, we could table for another meeting, but at least we have something to present to the public, so that we could at least get a public hearing at, at stage for November seventeenth, so we can get some feedback. I think it's important.
Well, but they're asking for fifty-three, right?
No, no, I don't know who's asking for what. I'd just go for forty-eight to fifty.
So, so the maximum height?
There is no back.
For the developers. I know everybody seems to think it's AOG, has nothing to do really with AOG.
Right, so as far as the maximum height at seven, personally, that is for senior citizen multiple dwelling units only. I would love to see somebody come in here and put a senior citizen building in here, which would be a shock to the economy of the village as well. Whether they're going to build a seventy-foot building, I doubt it. Now, could I, um, be persuaded to come down from seventy feet? Sure. But then we run into the situation where one inch over or whatever, triggers something. No, I'm just saying, you know what I mean? Just generally speaking. So, do we do sixty? Is fifty enough? Uh, you know, I mean, with the code, the way it's written nowadays, the space, the ceiling height, everything that needs to be done per New York State Building Code, is the forty-eight enough to get four stories in there for a senior complex? I, I don't know. I don't know. They're just questions that I'm asking, you know what I mean?
Right. And to ma, and maintain ADA compliance, you too.
But nobody's saying, nobody's saying, nobody's saying a company can't come in and build a hundred-foot building. If they want to get a variance, they can get a variance and do that. So, we're just trying to make things uniform and clean it up a little bit. And i-if you want, we'll take them one at a time, and we can vote on them if you want. Maybe that's easier way to do it. And then we'll have a cleaned up item, and then we can have, set a public hearing for a resolution, so that the public can input.
Okay.
Help us out, attorney.
Okay, if you're going to modify, you know, this, this was circulated to the board for your comments.
Yeah.
Okay. Was also circulated to the planning board, and the zoning board, but you have to circulate it to the pl, planning board. The, the public hearing, according to your own code, cannot be sent, cannot be set until you hear from your own planning board.
Oh, okay, good. So, we have time.
So, yeah, you have time, so if you want to make changes tonight.
Yeah.
Right, you would recirculate it to the planning board. And then, of course, as you know, you have to do seeker, all of that stuff.
Yeah, yeah, of course.
It has to go to the county, all of that.
All right, so let's, let's take each item, let's clean up this document, and then, like you just said, let's go back to the planning board anyway. You guys okay with that? Let me just vote on each item, and then, whatever you guys want to do, it's fine. So, right now, I'm just going to talk about the seventy-foot. I'd make a motion that we reduce it from seventy to fifty feet. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, motion by me, second by trustee Olivia.
Discussion.
Discussion.
So, fifty feet, I stated in my case earlier.
Yup.
I would love to see somebody come in. Am I comfortable with fifty for the senior? Um, what's that going to give them? Four stories at twelve-foot, with all the mechanicals?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, it's only a four-story building. Uh, we'd definitely like to see a five-story building, but that's just my opinion. Four seniors only, that's just, again, my opinion. If the rest of the board wants to go with fifty, like I said, I could be persuaded. But I, I would love to see some actual, only senior housing, uh, established in the village. And it, just so you know, if it truly is the R-five-A, there's only nineteen parcels there. Um, eighteen of them are single-family residential, and the ones at Two Valley, at this point in time. So, it doesn't affect a lot, that's for sure. And then, of course, if you're going to build this big building, uh, they're going to have to consolidate some of these lots. Uh, there's only a few that, uh, you may be able to do that with the required parking and all the other, um, things that are needed, just like when we, uh, throw, threw out there back in the day, the floating zone. Uh, you know, uh, there was a lot of different, uh, rules, restrictions, and uses that were only allowed there, um, which I thought was good, and hopefully, in the future, maybe we can address that. But that's just my opinion. I don't know what the rest of the board, if you want to go to fifty feet, P.
Sixty.
On the senior housing, sixty? Okay.
Are you okay with the sixty, or no? You can say no at all.
For senior citizen housing, seventy?
Yes.
Is that two?
Right here, seventy.
Well, right now, there's a, right, women, timeout, timeout, timeout.
Fifty's on the table.
Right now, there's a motion and a second for fifty.
Yeah.
So, let's take a roll call on that.
Trustee Ramus. Trustee Olivia.
Yes.
Trustee Garduolo.
No.
Trustee Carroll.
No.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes. Okay. Does anybody else want to make a motion?
Motion to make it sixty feet, sir.
Got to get a second.
Second.
Of course, for senior housing only, in the district that it is.
You're making the motion, so make sure you get it right.
Yeah, in the district that it is permitted in now. Sixty feet maximum height for senior housing.
Okay. Motion second, roll call.
Trustee Ramus.
Yay.
Trustee Olivia.
No.
Trustee Garduolo.
No.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes. One down. Let's do the height, forty-eight to fifty. Make a motion, we increase the height for B-one from forty-eight to fifty. I need a second.
Second.
Motion by J.D., second by J.R.
Is this for both points, for the forty-eight to fifty feet, and the addition of this additional clause?
No, it's just the feet. It's just the feet. We'll do the additional clause right after.
Okay.
Unless you want to link, do you want, will you feel more comfortable if we link?
Well, I feel like we don't necessarily need them both. One would subsidize the other.
Okay, so, the additional clause that says this doesn't count, you already have much of that in your code.
Yeah, we have, it's just a cleanup.
But this just clarified.
Yeah.
Because it had things like, I forget now, it had stuff that had made no sense whatsoever. So, what I tried to do was clarify it for those things that actually would be on a roof.
Yup.
Okay.
Utilities, elevator, HVAC.
Yeah, there was something in there.
There was some really wack, it's just, it was an older law, it was just like a cleanup.
So, it just cleaned that up.
Correct.
It didn't add anything or.
No.
Right.
So, I got a motion and a second. You okay?
Yes.
Are you okay? I'm going to take a roll call on that.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Would, would anybody mind if we made it five stories, and made it, you know, fifty-two feet? You can get a variance, you're fifty-two, fifty-three, right?
If this fails, Mr. Carroll, you can make a motion for that. Unless you want to make a motion on top of a motion.
No, you don't want any.
And then we get into a whole sticky thing. So, why don't we just see how this vote goes, and if you want to make a motion, you can make a motion. You okay?
Yeah.
Okay. Just for the public to understand, this is normally a work session, so we'd be at that table all, and this is, it gets, you know, it's a little dicey, so it's okay. You guys enjoy the show. Uh, I need a roll call on that.
Just a question. Hold on, please. So, uh.
I think you can get a five-story building in fifty feet.
Yeah. It's just a matter of.
It just depends on.
The mechanics.
It depends on your design.
Yeah, it depends on your design.
So, you, you have elements not intended for human occupancy, right?
Right.
Should we have parapet on that or not?
In other words, something that, that covers the utilities?
See this?
Yeah.
That would be a parapet above the roof. I didn't see that.
That is completely up to the board. I know that in front of the planning board, there have been older applications that said, well, I'm going to hide it all behind a parapet so I don't want the parapet to count. You could do that, but now you have what is visually.
Correct.
Another story, almost. So the other option would be to move it away. You just, you don't need a parapet. You just move the utilities back so that you don't see it.
Correct.
Unless you're droning over it or flying or something, right?
Why would?
That's the problem with parapets.
Yeah, but I agree, but also parapets, if you go to the old way of saying, a book about actual design and architecture, this village was done, actually built that way, so we have parapets here now.
On three-story buildings.
Yeah, that, just give it character. And that's my only point.
It's, it's completely up to the board. You know, you have those two options. You make it look taller from the street in terms of the bulk, or you set it back. Or you, I mean, you can always get a variance if you want to add a parapet and it makes sense. But it's up to you guys. It's not my decision.
So if we said parapet and then we went into the definition, right?
I, I think that's a problem, because now what is a parapet?
No, but if we change the definition to a half a story parapet, that's only another five feet. No, I'm just saying.
Yeah, it's up to you guys. I mean, I, you know.
I mean, it's a thought. It's a thought.
But can we just stay, hold on a second, Mr. Carroll, before you go. Can we just stay focused on this part and you could always add that if you want? Yes, sir.
If you take a look at the buildings in West Point, they're approximately three-foot high. And, or maybe four. And it would give us a military look, because we're military towns. I think parapets would be very nice. I think the parapets would be, be a positive, you know, design for what we're going to do on Main Street, you know, the military look.
I'm, I'm not opposed to voting on it, but let's just, let's do this part and then we can add the word parapet to the, to the other section. Right now, I just want to deal with the 48 to 50. That's the motion. That's the second. I'd like the roll call.
Trustee Remus.
Yay.
Trustee Olivia.
No.
Trustee Gardullo.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
What is it?
The 48 to 50.
Okay, yes.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes. Okay. All right, so that's that change. Now, want to include parapets into this, into this language? Mr. Remus is out of motion.
Is that what you're thinking of adding in? Like chimneys, like bowls, book heads?
Correct.
And would you say parapet's up to a certain height? Again.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to leave that open.
Yeah, we're going to clean it up.
Yeah. So.
So what height?
I think, I think five feet is acceptable. I mean, if you actually look at the building across the street, their parapet's probably.
So the building will look 55 feet high?
Oh, that building over there looks way higher, but it's not.
Okay, I'm just, it's up to the board.
Yeah. I, I would say a parapet at five feet. But that's just my opinion.
Up to?
Up, up to five feet. Yes, sir.
Is that your motion?
My motion is to add to the elements, parapets at a height not to exceed five feet.
He's making a motion. Is that your motion? You got that motion, Madam Clerk?
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah.
I would like to add to the elements section that parapets be added at a height no greater than five feet.
That's the motion.
All the way around the building?
Yes.
Okay, that's the. Up to, up to, up to five feet. You have that motion?
Yes, sir.
I need a second for that? Well, you can amend it if you'd like.
I'd like to make a motion.
Oh, we have another one. Go for it.
Then we go between three and four feet.
Pick a number, Pete.
All right, say four feet at the most.
So four feet's the magic number?
Because if you take.
But you have a motion of, of. Have a motion of five.
Have a motion of five.
Hold on, I can amend my motion.
Oh, okay.
To four feet. Would that, would that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. Madam Clerk, when you get a chance, can you order four Robert Rules of Order books for the board members?
You don't want Robert Rules of.
So at least they have an idea? Okay, so.
I'll amend my motion to four feet.
Trustee Remus is amending his motion to four feet and trustee Carol's seconding it?
Yes, but if you're going to do it architecturally and look like West Point, you're going to go across with like three, three feet, have a little stanchion on each corner, you know, to make it look like a military.
I, I don't know, I don't know about all that, but Mr. Remus has his motion. The question is, is someone going to second it?
I'll second that.
Trustee Gardullo's going to second the motion, which we have in writing, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by trustee Gardullo. Any more discussion other than what trustee Carol said for the record? Okay, I'll take a roll call on that.
Trustee Remus.
Yay.
Trustee Olivia.
No.
Trustee Gardullo.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes. Okay, and last but not least is the percent reduction stuff, which I know Mr. Remus is dying.
I'm chomping at the bit. I see him right now.
So again, and I'm willing, you know, this is new for us. I understand that. I appreciate everyone's patience tonight. This is how government really works sometimes. We work it out. We talk it out. Probably we haven't seen this in a long time up here, so this is good. New regime, you know. So again, I was 25% reduction with, if you wanted to add a residential aspect to it, depending on whatever your design is, and up to a 50% reduction if you wanted to add parking. And just to add that there are certain sections of the B1 zone that are exempt from parking, but our parking issues are not exempt. We have parking issues. If you don't realize that, I recommend that anybody take a ride down Main Street on a busy Saturday and you're fighting for a spot. Especially if you have an event on at one of the municipal lots, which we normally do. Like if a, if a, if a design person or a owner of a property wants to come in and add a few more parking spots, why wouldn't I want to give them some kind of incentive to do that? So my motion would be for a 25% reduction if you wanted to add residential on the commercial section and a 50% reduction, or a 50% reduction if you want to add parking.
Okay, but the parking would only be for the residential use of that building? Is that what you're saying?
It could be used for residential or office, for the commercial, whatever. I don't. Yeah, I guess, yes, for the residential only.
But not for anyone to just park?
Correct. It would be dedicated to the property owner. Like they would, it would be, you know, parking for whatever, the Acme Building.
Okay.
So that's my motion. I would need a second, but who knows tonight?
I second.
Oh. So trustee Gardullo seconded that motion. You have the, do you have, kind of have the motion, Madam Clerk?
25% reduction to add residential.
Up to, up to 25% and up to 50% for, or parking. It's residential or parking, not both.
Right, so if you are using the reduction for residential, you'll only get 25.
Up to, yeah.
Up to. If you're using it for parking but not residential.
Right. Correct. So that would be, that's my motion, and it was seconded by trustee Gardullo. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, so having more residential units on the ground floor is going to be your first step in lowering resale values for properties in the residential districts. Residential districts are going to take the beating here when you have residences in a business district. It's going to change the quality of life in the community. It's going to hinder the commercial viability that was promised to the residents when we made our previous zoning change. It's going to give less opportunity for business growth. It's going to force, again, like I said, the residents to traverse across the mountain for their essential needs. From my perspective, residential units on the first floor do not attract visitors to our Main Street. They do not attract visitors. Businesses attract visitors. Residential units on the first floor will not. And that's what we're looking for. We're looking for visitors that, I hear it all the time, how come the people going to West Point aren't coming onto Main Street? Well, if we have residences on the first floor, we allow that. It's not going to bring the visitors onto Main Street. You know, and it's not only West Point, you know, there's people that enjoy the Hudson Valley. We have a park going in, you have Storm King. These are all viable factors that will contribute to our local economy without taxing the limited resources that we have available. The residents continue to ask us for revitalization of Main Street. We had a Main Street revitalization grant. We need to enhance the existing businesses and give opportunity for more businesses on the first floor.
Absolutely. So a couple of quick, are you done trustee Remus?
I'm never done, but I'm done for the moment, sir.
A couple of quick things. I think a lot of what you said, there may be validity to what you said, but I think a lot of it's opinion. I do not think that a residential spot on Main Street in a commercial building takes away from any single-family homes in any of the other R1, 2, or 3 districts, or 4. I think that's a little bit of a stretch, very big stretch. In addition to having visitors come here, yes, we love to have visitors, but I think a healthy population would also be in our benefit. Our population is stagnant. It does not grow. Every 10 years, we are roughly the same. We lose a few people, God rest them. They move. We gain a few people, but we stay stagnant. We need to have places to live in this community. I don't know when the last time you went and looked for an apartment, I recently have, and I will tell you that it's impossible. There are some out there, but there's not a lot. And, and I was a landlord, so I understand this, but the only way to drive some of the prices down in order to make some economic availability for some folks, some hard-working folks, which we mentioned before, which this board, you know, was cognizant of on a $37.50 bill, is that we need to have housing, okay? We need to have a workforce here. We want people to live here. And in order to do that, you need people to be able to live in places. And unfortunately, we do not have a plethora of places to live. I do not think that on a 3,000-square-foot commercial section of building on the first floor, taking 25% of it, maybe putting in an apartment, will, will sack the rest of the community and property prices will go to the floor. If anything, if we have more residents in this community, more shops will come and they'll stay healthy and they won't close every six months. So I, I don't disagree with some of the things you said. I think it's a little bit of a stretch on some of it. So I don't know if anybody else has any more comments, but if not, I'll call a question. If not, I'll call the question on this vote. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. We can beat it a dead horse at the, at the public hearing.
Trustee Remus.
No.
Trustee Olivia.
No.
Trustee Gardullo.
Yes.
Trustee Carol.
Yes.
Mayor DeSalvo.
Yes. All right, I think that was it for that one.
Well, a comment on that, sir, real quick, Ben. If you're really worried about residential units, Mr. Malakot has brought up numerous times that we should be looking at the R districts where residential units are allowed and decrease the size of the lot for two-family residents or apartments.
I, I recommend while you're campaigning to go through those homes and let them folks know in the single-family areas that you want to add two families into those areas and neighborhoods. And see, and see, and see what you, what your response is. So we're going to move on, we're going to move on to the next one.
I was at the planning board meeting on this past.
No, no, I'm sorry, this work session. So we had public hearing, we had public comment. I apologize.
I was at the planning board meeting and what is proposed for some of the larger parcels is going to shock everybody, just so you know, in Saddle Grove, in the rural part area.
And as far as I know, they're single-family homes, not multifamily. Trying to look for my agenda, darn it. There it is.
Which are right on top of each other. They're looking for maybe five-yard setbacks.
Well, that's a zoning change, not in our purview at this moment. Okay, number nine, which is the Village of Highland Falls introductory local law, number three maybe, of 2025, adding a chapter 181 permitting and regulating short-term rental property within one and two-family homes. We don't have anything on the books. This addresses short-term rentals. It addresses Airbnbs. We have a big fair share of that in this community. And luckily, the Village of Cornwall went through an arduous process to come up with this information, and I appreciate them spending the money and time on it. So we, you know, I'm not a big fan of reinventing the wheel every time. So we captured this law. I know the board has had it for some time now. And the attorney had it and tweaked it a little bit for stuff pertaining to us.
Also, there was, I did get comments from Phil Hamel, which were reasonable, and I think those were circulated to you guys.
I did see his comments, but I didn't see that they were actually reflected in the resolution.
I did, well, I did a red line, so you should have gotten a new red line. Okay, well, you will get it. If you want all those comments, you will get it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought that they were good, so, yeah, all right.
So I don't know what you guys want to do with this. I mean, it's something we definitely need. In fact, we had a call today for someone who's looking to purchase a piece of property or they already have purchased a piece of property and they were asking if we had any regulations on the books now. It's something we need to address. So I don't know off the top of the hand what suggestions Phil had. Was it, was it a huge substantive change? Was it procedural, right?
It was more procedural.
Okay.
And just so everyone is clear, short-term rentals are not permitted in the Village of Highland Falls. To the extent that they're being done, they're not lawful.
I know. I know.
Why are we changing that?
Well, I think what the board is saying is it's happening, and believe me, it's happening everywhere. And so many municipalities are trying to get a handle on it by actually regulating it, rather than just.
So we're going to permit them then?
It's up to you guys. I was asked to draft. I went off the Cornwall. It was a very good local law.
Right.
I've drafted a few others for other municipalities, so I did a little tweaking.
And I don't know if Cornwall passed anything that allowed, did Cornwall pass anything that allows them? Or it's just?
Well, this allows them.
Right.
And there, you would have to, I mean, they're essentially allowed in residential districts.
Correct.
I thought in one of the first drafts, maybe I read it wrong, where it said when permitted. Was that stricken out?
When permitted?
Yes.
Maybe where, when permitted means.
That we're going to do that now?
Right.
No?
No, I'm not sure what the question is. I'm sorry, trustee Remus.
I read in here, it said.
In what? In the local law or in the resolution?
In the local law that was written, or it might have been one of the first drafts, it said when permitted. And that was my only concern, that, you know, why is that?
And can you tell me exactly where it says that? I'm sorry.
I would have to go through it again, or it could have been, like I said, from a previous draft.
Let me just.
This is the only draft we have, so it might have just been, it might have been in there at one place, but.
Short-term rental is 30 days or less. It's not a boarding house. Boarding houses are not allowed either. So some of those.
I mean, I don't, I could change a word in it, though.
I just want to make sure that's, we're addressing it now anyway.
No, 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 no.
Because we're permitting it, correct?
No, no, we're not, this, we're just setting a public hearing for this, that's all.
I will go back and look and find it.
I can, I can search for it now.
So do we at least want to put this on a public hearing with Phil's suggestions?
As long as Phil's suggestions are there, then I'll follow this.
You okay with that? Okay, with Phil's suggestions? At least, is that okay? And then if you see, find that word, we'll change it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not finding it.
Okay.
Oh, wait, here. It's only allowed, it's not permitted in three-family dwellings or multiple. It's only for single-family, two-family homes. That's where it's permitted. And then there's not, there's stuff that's not permitted, like big parties.
Right.
Wedding hosting. I'm just not finding when permitted. I apologize.
No, that's okay. I'll go back to check. I could have read somewhere else.
That's all right.
I could be wrong. I just wanted to make sure this is what we're doing. We're permitting them. It shouldn't be in there.
Well, the problem is, the problem is now is they're not permitted and they're happening anyway, so.
On at least 18 different things, not only Airbnb and Virgo, Litter Advisor, Booking.com, Kayak, Vacation Center, Stay Hudson Valley, Our Rockbound, Highland Homes, Caribbean Suites Lodging, Agoda, Evolve. You can find Airbnbs.
Everywhere.
For this village on this list, in this village. My only other concern is what the fines and fees, on what the fines and fees will be. And will this be an ongoing permit fee every year or every two years?
So, so on the fee part, we're going to add that to our fee schedule.
Okay.
I actually added a whole fee schedule.
Okay, good.
When, you know, just when I was doing Phil's modifications, I realized there's no. It's Cornwall. I don't know, but I figured you needed one here.
Yeah.
So I added that.
Okay.
So I'll make sure that the red line, Phil, gets circulated to you guys. And you can take a look at that. But I did add simple criminal civil.
Yeah, I saw.
And, and the fines, I mean, if we just keep bringing up like Cornwall and that. And, and the fines, I mean, if we just keep bringing up like Cornwall and that, I know Warwick has gone through it as well with hefty fines for their short-term rentals.
Yeah.
Something that we could probably look at as well.
Yeah.
But I, I know I thought I seen something in there.
I picked it up, what I did was I made your fine structure the same as if there's a property maintenance violation.
Right.
Okay.
Now, you can increase that or whatever, but I thought, obviously, that's something that you've thought about and put in another very similar law in terms of property maintenance.
Right.
So I put that here.
Right, so with that being said, I guess we'll have to have somebody peruse the sites and cross-reference to make sure that they have put in an application, and then we could send them, which is what they do in Warwick. They send them something and they have seven days or whatever, we could give them two weeks to respond, come down and just put their application in. If they do not, then a fine would ensue for every day that they did not, especially if we sent them certified mailing.
And I think that was Phil's biggest issue, which we have not resolved, or you have not resolved, which is who's gonna administer this?
Okay.
That's, it's a huge effort.
Yeah.
And it's a real struggle for my clients as well as others.
It's, it's a struggle in every community, and, and every community I've talked to or, or worked with or spoken to, and I actually spoke to a trustee in the Village of Warwick. It's a huge undertaking, but they all started with this, with this portion. And I think what I would like to do is at least take this with the amended as with the building inspector's comments, and let's set the public hearing for November 17th.
Okay.
And then we, and then we're gonna have a whole fine schedule that we're gonna have to approve too.
So then I'll accept the comments.
Yep.
I'll send you a red line version, I'll accept the comments, I'll send it all to the clerk, and that's what the public will be able to see.
Correct.
Okay.
Jimmy, I'm sorry, do you have a bed and breakfast law in the village?
Um, their, their, bed and breakfasts are allowed.
It's a permitted use.
It's a permitted use, yeah.
So why don't you just roll off of your bed and breakfast?
This is different.
Because usually, it's, it's the length of time that you stay at a bed and breakfast versus one of these. And usually, the bed and breakfasts are owner-occupied, it's, it's.
No, because in.
Usually, usually, but they just have a definition, and they're permitted.
And I believe our code says if you have a bed and breakfast, you, the owner must reside there.
Right.
In the village?
The village code, yes.
Not in the town?
Right.
No. But in the village code it says.
And I think there's only two bed and breakfasts, and they're in Fort Montgomery, but I don't think there are any in the village.
And there was one, one time in the village.
On that.
Well, I think it was, it was down in Crankson.
What do you want to announce?
One on that.
Oh, yeah, right, right. So this introduction local law adding Chapter 181 permitting and regulating short-term rental property within one- and two-family homes, as amended per Trustee Olivia for the comments that the building inspector provided. Be resolved on an introductory local law titled Adding Chapter 181 Permitting and Regulating Short-Term Rental Properties Within One- and Two-Family Homes is hereby introduced by Mayor DeSalvo before the Board of Trustees of the Village of John Falls, County of Orange, and New York. Be that further resolved, the Village Clerk shall refer to the proposed local law to the Planning Board for comment. And be it further resolved, the Village Clerk shall refer the proposed law by certified mail to the governing body of all surrounding municipalities. Be it further resolved, that a motion made by Trustee Olivia? Are you moving that with the comments?
Sure.
Okay.
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Olivia, seconded by.
I'll second.
Trustee Gardjulo. Resolution adopted in a, all in favor?
You're setting the public hearing for what?
Yeah, November 17th, I'm sorry.
Okay.
November, I'm sorry. Senior Center, 15 Drew Avenue, Village of John Falls, on Monday, November 17th, 2025. Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, motion carried. Do you want this one back?
Sure.
Can you share? I don't know if you just sent that to you or what.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, that's nice, thank you, very nice. I think that's all we have. Uh, just a quick, couple little quick things, only because they're happening in the next week or so. This Saturday, there's a 2025 Orange County Household Hazardous Waste. It's in Municipal Lot 2, which is across from Sacred Heart Church. So if you have some, there's a whole list of stuff, it's on the website. Town's putting it on with the sanitation. Wood preservatives, resins, spot removers, engine degreasers, ammunition. Pete? Radioactive material.
Oh.
Mr. Copeland. Unknown gases, controlled substances, we're also, there's gonna be two sheriffs there taking, you know, bad medication and, yeah, rechargeable batteries, auto tractor batteries, auto and tractors. See, I don't know if any tractors in town, but there might be one or two. Motor oil, anyway, all kinds of stuff, this Saturday, Lot 2, there'll be a whole traffic pattern. So that's a pretty, it's never happened here before, so that was a good thing by the town sanitation organization with the county and the village PD, we appreciate all of that, thank you. 31st is Mobile DMV at the Senior Center. Mobile DMV at the Senior Center, you get your passports, Ms. Scott, I know you want to go travel.
I have my Irish passport.
I know, God bless you. And you get your enhanced ID so you can go into government buildings.